Okay, good evening, everyone. Sorry, apologies for being a little late. Thank you for your patience. We are reconvening our open session. And I'd like to ask trustee Inman to report out actions taken in closed session.
On a seven to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to issue a notice of rejection of claim number 2024-120001 pursuant to Government Code Section 913. The Governor, the governing board further authorizes the Vice Chancellor of Business Services or her designate to issue any appropriate notices.
Thank you for that. We will now have the invocation led by trustee Prendergast followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Rydel. If you are able, please stand.
This time of the holiday seasons, it's a time of joy, giving, receiving, and general merriment for most people, but not for all. It's a time for us to reflect and remember that not everyone has the ability to provide gifts for their family. Not everyone is experiencing joy or merriment. And I feel it's important for us to be that shoulder for someone to lean on, to be that person that can help them provide for their loved ones, to be that person to help make the world a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, we do this every once in a while. We are now going to administer oaths of office. To, we will first start out with the re-elected trustees, trustee Carolyn Inman, trustee Ryan Dack, and myself. And I'm, we're very honored to have with us tonight the Honorable Superior Court Judge, I think I know who she is, Gacy Abkarian, will be administering the oath of, the oath of office to myself, trustee Dack, and trustee Inman. So I would like to ask trustees, trustees Dack and Inman, are we gonna come together or we're gonna stay where we are?
Let's go together.
Yeah, I think we come together.
Do you want me to take pictures?
Sure. Yeah. Last year, we did.
So I've, I've been told that I'm going to do each one of you separately in case friends or family want to take pictures. So I'm happy to do it as a group or I'm happy to do it one at a time?
Good. Ryan, you're up.
Okay.
I think they need you on a microphone so they can record your voice.
Do you want to do it here?
Are you over here?
Sure. Go ahead.
Ready?
Yes.
All right. I state your name.
I, Ryan Dack.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
Then that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I, state your name, please.
I, Carolyn Inman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, husband to the judge, never mind.
That's the more important title. It's the only title that matters. I, Timothy Jamal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any, any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Abkarian. It is now my pleasure to introduce the Honorable Superior Court Judge John Adams, who will be administering the oath of office to our newest trustee, Lisa Bartlett.
Well, thank you, Mr. Jamal. Thank you for that warm introduction. It gives me great pleasure to be here to swear and longtime friend, Lisa Bartlett. Are you ready to take that oath?
I am.
Well, let's get underway. I state your name.
I, Lisa Bartlett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose.
Without any mental reservation or purpose.
Of evasion.
Of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you both for taking the time to join us at our humble board meeting and administering the oaths of office. It's so important to us in the, in this role as trustees and have two Superior Court judges here means a lot to us. Thank you. You're not requi, you're not, you're not required to remain for the remain, for the rest of the board meeting. All right. We're now going to move on to, we don't have to do this.
Oh, we do, we do. So I get a, I get to have 3.6. And so it's, it's, it's hard to believe that it has been two years since President Jamal has served as the president of the board, but it has been two years. And I think all of us have experienced his, his expertise and his leadership as a board president. And again, really appreciate, you know, not only your commitment to, you know, running a, a smooth show here, I think we all appreciate that, but also just really putting your heart and soul into this district and our students and our employees. It is duly noted and appreciated. And so with that said, we have a little gift for you that we would like to present.
Thank you.
So we wanted to give something practical because we know you're a practical kind of person.
Am I?
Yes, yes, definitely. And so, and so, you know, you might've seen some plaques in the past, but this time we have these beautifully, beautiful pins with your names, with your name on it. So there you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, photo picture.
Your wife left, so she doesn't know you got it.
She waved.
She won't steal.
That's enough. Oh. Thank you very much, Chancellor Barnes. I, I really do appreciate that. That was really heartfelt gesture. It means, it does mean a lot. Okay. Well, now we are turning to our annual organization meeting. And I'm going to adjourn our regular board meeting and call the organizational meeting to order. So in accordance with California Education Code 35143 and pursuant to Board Policy 2305, the Board of Trustees will take separate action on items 3.8 through 3.13 in order to comply with the requirements of the annual organizational meeting. And we're gonna turn to item 3.8, which is the election of officers. I will now ask for nominations for each officer position and then call for a motion in a second after which votes will take place. So I will now accept offer or motions for the office of president.
I would like to nominate trustee Inman for president. Like to make a motion?
I second. So we have a motion from trustee Dack to nominate trustee Inman for the office of president in a, I think, a concurrent second, but the first one, I think, went to trustee Prendergast. Any questions on this nomination? No? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. Trustee Inman, congratulations.
I'd like to move trustee Dack for vice president.
So motion for trustee Dack to serve as vice president.
I second it.
Second from trustee Inman. Any other questions or nominations from the floor? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Trustee Bartlett.
Yes.
Trustee Dack.
Abstain.
Trustee Inman.
Yes.
Trustee Jamal.
I.
Trustee Milchiker.
I.
Trustee Prendergast.
I.
Trustee Rydel.
I.
And no student trustee.
All right. So the motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote with one trustee abstention. Congratulations, trustee Dack. Now turning to our third officer position. Do we have a motion in a second for clerk of the board?
I'd like to move trustee Prendergast for clerk of the board.
Motion from tr, for, from trustee Dack for trustee Prendergast to become the clerk of the board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Bartlett. Any questions? Do we need a roll call vote on this one, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Bartlett.
Yes.
Trustee Dack.
I.
Trustee Inman.
Yes.
Trustee Jamal.
I.
Trustee Milchiker.
I.
Trustee Prendergast.
Abstain.
Trustee Rydel.
I.
By my calculation, the vote carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote with one trustee abstention. Trustee Prendergast, congratulations to you. Now, we're moving on to other items in the organizational meeting, the appointment of our secretary and assistant secretary. After the appointment of the secretary and assistant secretary, the board will vote after both, both appointments have been made. So let's, I will call for a motion in a second. We're not, we're doing both concurrently? Okay. Do we have a motion for our secretary and assistant secretary of the board?
I move that Chancellor Barnes be secretary and who was assistant secretary? I believe it was Emery Gabel, Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
Okay. Motion from trustee Dack that Chancellor Barnes serve as secretary of the board and Vice Chancellor Gabel serve as assistant secretary of the board. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that trustee Bartlett? Second from trustee Bartlett. Any questions? Okay. Are we still on roll call?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote electronically. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. Congratulations to the two of you on your appointments. All right. Now we're moving on to item 3.10, appointment of trustee representatives. So we do need a nomination for a trustee to serve on the nominating committee to the Committee on School District Organization. Current representative is trustee Dack. Current alternate is trustee Prendergast. The committee itself, the responsibilities include reviewing nominations to the Orange County Committee on School District Organizations that are submitted between July and October through a nomination process. They elect the committee members by absentee ballot, by an in-person ballot at the joint OCSBA/ACSA meeting held between October 1st and December 1st. Do we have a nomination for someone to serve as the representative and the alternate to the nominating committee, to the Committee on School District Organization?
What would be the alternate?
Do we have a nomination?
I'd be happy to continue if the board seats fit, but I'm also happy to have someone else take it over. It's pretty lightweight.
I appreciate that.
Situation.
Not to, not to, not to set you aside just for a second. Is anyone else interested in serving as the representative to the nominating committee of the school district organization?
What would be the alternate? There's one in one.
Okay. So I'm gonna nominate, hearing none, I'm gonna nominate trustee Dack to serve as the representative to the nominating committee in the school district organization and an expression of interest from trustee Rydel to nominate her to be the alternate.
I'll second.
Second. Motion is seconded. And I think we can call for an electronic vote. No? I'm sorry?
At the end.
Okay.
Unless you want to. Do it all at the end.
Oh, I see. You want us to get the nominations through. Okay. I got it. All right. We're now on to, so we have motion in a second on that. We do have 3.1, establishment of regular meeting dates and times. The board will approve the agenda, meeting calendar. Is there a motion in a second to approve the meeting calendar?
We have to do all these other jobs first. The other ones.
Oh, we gotta do everything. I apologize. Okay. I was going on another. Okay, we gotta do every single rep. Got it. I got it. I got it. My bad. I apologize. So we need the district's political action rep to the OCSBA, which is the Orange County School Board Association. The current representative is trustee Prendergast.
Nominate trustee Prendergast for that.
We have a motion for trustee Prendergast to continue serving in this role. Is there a second? Oh, we're gonna, do I need a motion in a second for each? Just for the whole thing? Okay, got it. All right. So let's move on to representative for the Orange County Legislative Task Force. Current representative is trustee Milchiker. The current alternate is trustee Inman. Any input or comments on this from trustees?
I nominate, I nominate Marsha.
Okay. So there's a, it seems to be interest to have trustee Milchiker continue serving in this role. And there was motion from trustee Rydel.
Thank you.
Trustee Inman, I assume, wants to continue as a role.
Trustee Inman to, a second from trustee Prendergast for trustee Inman to continue serving as an alternate. Okay. Now we have the representative to the IVC Foundation.
Right. Audit Committee.
Sorry?
Audit Committee.
Yeah.
Is next on our list. I don't have, it's not next on mine.
Number four, representative.
Oh. Next on mine is the foundation.
It's four. Carolyn, you ready? Four representative.
Oh, I see. Okay. Sorry. So we're tied at one at mistakes. Okay. All right. Representative to the IVC Foundation, current represent, the current trustee representative is Carolyn Inman.
I nominate Carolyn Inman.
Okay.
I second that.
Did you like, would you like to continue in this role?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Inman would like to continue in this role. We now need a representative to the Saddleback College Foundation. Current representative is Terry Rydel. Trustee Rydel.
I'd like to do it.
Trustee Rydel expresses an interest to continue doing it.
So I'll nominate her.
Yeah. Grace, we don't need a nomination for each of the subcategories, right?
You could nominate.
Okay. I have a nomination from trustee Rydel. I mean, from trustee Milchiker to have trustee Rydel continue as the representative to the Saddleback College Foundation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Dack. All right. Now we're on to the audit committee. Our current representatives to the audit committee, the audit subcommittee, current chair is trustee Prendergast, the one vacant seat on the committee, and trustee Rydel serves as the other representative. So currently, it's trustee Prendergast, a vacancy, trustee Rydel. The alternate is trustee Dack.
I nominate trustee Bartlett.
Okay. We have a nomination for, from trustee Inman for trustee Bartlett to serve as chair of the audit committee, or is that something you accept?
Chair?
Well, I think coming out of the gate, I'm not sure.
Oh, no.
I wanna be chair, but.
Carolyn, are you nominating for chair or the vacancy?
The vacancy.
Okay.
The vacancy, that's, that's.
Okay.
I mean, I don't mind giving up chair, but like you said, you're coming on.
No, 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 no. That was all yours.
So we should probably, we can do that. We can take it out of order. So we have a nomination trustee Bartlett to serve on the audit committee from trustee Inman and I, who seconded?
I'll second.
Second, trustee Dack. Okay. Now let's turn to the chair role. Do we have a nomination for the chair of the audit committee?
Can I ask TJ, are you interested in continuing?
Sure. So we have a.
I'll nominate TJ.
Nomination from trustee Prendergast.
And I'll second that.
Continue serving as chair of the audit committee, second from trustee Bartlett. Now we need a second representative. It's currently trustee Rydel.
I'll do it.
Okay. Do we have a nomination for trustee Rydel to continue serving on the?
I'll nominate trustee Rydel to continue serving.
Trustee Dack has nominated trustee Rydel to serve as the representative, the second representative on the audit committee, subcommittee. Is there a second?
It's Lisa.
Do we have a second?
A second.
For trustee Rydel to also serve on the, on the audit subcommittee.
I'll second.
Do you second that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Seconded from trustee Milchiker. All right.
And then trustee Dack, you continue as alternate?
I, do we need a, okay, we need an actual, okay. And then trustee, so the motion is amended to include trustee Dack as the alternate. Got it? He's got all that? Okay. Almost there. Representatives to the South Orange County Community College District Board Policy Subcommittee. The current chair is Carolyn Inman. The two representatives, well, we have one representative, trustee Dack, and then we have a vacancy. So we currently have two, and the alternate is trustee Prendergast. So we need to nominate a chair and two representatives to serve on the Board Policy Subcommittee, which is responsible for reviewing board policies that come before the board here for review and study and then ultimate approval.
I recommend trustee Bartlett because it would be a good way for her to learn some of the board policies.
Yeah.
Do you accept that nomination to be the chair of the board?
No, not the chair.
Oh, you all want the chair.
The vacancy.
So you're starting in, well, okay. All right.
I was going with the vacancy.
Okay. So trust, she, she's happy to serve.
Happy to serve in the vacancy. Thank you.
Okay. We have a nomination trustee Bartlett. Is there a second for this?
I second it.
Okay. Second from trustee Inman. Let's go back to, let's go to the chair role. Do we have a nomination for a chair of the Board Policy Subcommittee?
Maybe I would like to nominate trustee Dack to move into the chair.
All right. We have a nomination for trustee Dack to serve as the chair of the Board Policy Subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Bartlett. All right. Now.
I mean, out of that committee?
No.
Oh.
Now we have nomination in second for chair and one of the representatives. We need a nomination in a second for the third member of the Board Policy Subcommittee.
I'd like to nominate trustee Inman for the final seat on that committee.
Okay. We have nomination from trustee Dack for trustee Inman to serve as the second representative on the Board Policy Subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, trustee Milchiker. And then we need an alternate. Currently, it's trustee Prendergast. Are you interested in staying in this capacity?
Just looking at kind of distribution of, of wealth here, trustee Milchiker, would you like to be that alternate?
Okay. I'd be the alternate.
Okay. Now, so I would take that as a motion for trustee Milchiker to be the alternate to the Board Policy Subcommittee. Can someone second that?
Second.
Second from trustee Rydel. Do you have the slate, Grace? All right. Now we have the final subcategory under 3.10, which are the trustee representatives to the district's Legislative Advocacy Subcommittee. And this is the.
I'd like to nominate trustee Lisa Bartlett for that.
Well, okay. First, I wanna, I wanna, everyone's wanting to nominate me for chair.
No, no, no.
So let's.
I, I'd like to nominate Marshall Milchiker as the Chair.
Okay, we have a motion from.
Second.
Okay, motion trustee Bartlet and a second trustee Prendergast to have Marshall Milchiker serve as Chair of the Legislative Advocacy Subcommittee. Okay, we need two additional members of the Subcommittee.
Oh, so I nominate.
Right, right now, we have Ryan Dak and Carolyn Inman, do you?
We just chose Lisa Bartlet for that, didn't we? For one of them.
Nominated her.
I'll nominate Lisa Bartlet to serve on the committee.
Yeah, I don't know if we did a motion and second on her.
I, I move.
Okay, motion from Lisa Bartlet to be a member.
I second.
And a second from trustee Rydel, all right? And then, we need one more representative, representative on the.
I'd like to nominate trustee Inman for Legislative Subcommittee.
Okay, motion from trustee Dak for trustee Inman to serve as representative on the Legislative Advocacy Task Force. Is there, or Subcommittee, is there a second?
Second.
Second trustee Bartlet. And then we also, finally, we need an alternate.
Well, seeing as you're not on anything.
I, I, I've got out of this meeting unscathed, two years as Board President. I guess that knows, I know.
I'm sorry.
I just got done saying we need to distribute the wealth and now we're, Tim somehow got undistributed.
Or kicked to the curb, I'm not sure what it is.
I nominate trustee Jamal to be the, you've done a great job as President these last two years.
I think you guys are sick of me, right? All right, okay, that's fine, I will accept being the alternate.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, and in a second, I guess.
Second, oh, I nominated him.
Oh, second.
Second trustee Dak, so I will continue to be the alternate.
Is there an office that you kind of wish you were on? Because again, you seem to manage not to do anything extra.
You guys, this is, this is a democratic institution, the will has been expressed.
I would gladly give something up if you want to jump in on something.
You know what? I think this, this flowed, this flowed organically. We have an organization meeting annually every year. And so, I think we've completed our, our tasks for item 3.10. And I think we can vote on the item overall.
Great.
So now, we need a motion for the, to prove, okay, you have that. Okay. Uh, the motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. Congratulations to all of you trustee representatives. I will now move to the back bench. All right, um. I'm sorry? I don't know. I, I don't know. Okay. So, we, now, okay, now we're on to 3.11, which is Establishment of Regular Meeting Dates. The Board needs to approve the Agenda Meeting Calendar. I will now entertain a motion and a second for, to approve the meeting dates and times.
I move.
Motion from trustee Rydel. Second from trustee Milchiker. And let's go ahead and vote on the item, 3.11. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote. All right, we're now on to the 3.12, Establishment of the Agenda Planning Calendar. We need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
Motion trustee Milchiker, second trustee Dak. Let's go ahead and vote on the 3.12. The Planning Calendar is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote. Finally, we are now on to 3.13, Approval of the Agenda Format. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Milchiker, trustee Dak, will you accept the second?
Yes.
Okay, and then question from trustee Prendergast.
Yes. On the Agenda Format, we have for quite a while now, at my suggestion, and I appreciate that it being put in there by the Board at the time, response to public comments, but I feel that that has not been utilized properly. It says in there, response to public comments requested, and it shouldn't be that. I think it should be the Chancellor and/or Vice Chancellor or some staff, depending on the situation, having some response. I feel like when we just continually brush that off as there were no responses requested, it gives the impression that we are ignoring the public. And I feel that there have been many cases where we can't respond at the time. But I feel like oftentimes.
So what, what would you be asking the change be? You're not, are you asking for a mandatory response?
Not a mandatory, where it seemed, where it would be, or even if any of us approached the Chancellor or say one of the College Presidents is, hey, are you going to respond to this?
So why don't we say?
And just have it be something.
What does it currently read? How does it currently?
It currently reads, public response to public, staff response to public comments from the previous Board meeting. And when you click on it, it says, Members of the Public, public comment response from staff was not requested during last month's Board meeting. So I don't know if that's implying that we're supposed to.
Oh, I see.
Request, or.
Why don't we just take that out?
But I, I do feel like we're not utilizing it quite properly.
Well, how about we, I'm just think, because I didn't know you were going to bring this up, obviously, but I mean, what if we say, what does it say? Staff, staff response to public comments as appropriate?
Sure.
I mean, just, I don't.
Well, it's just, it, it, the, the actual line item says, staff response to public comments.
Yeah, I got it.
But in the status is where they say there were none requested. I don't think it should be a request triggering us having a response. I think a response should come, uh, organically.
I agree.
Can I, can I?
Go ahead, yeah, Chancellor.
So I, I would say, because sometimes, as we know, there, we have many public comments depending on what the, what the topic is. And so, I think it, it, if a public comment warrants a response, I think it would, it would be good practice for the Board to, to set that expectation of the Chancellor. Otherwise, it's, you know, if we have 20 that day or 10, you know, sometimes it's, it's, they don't warrant a, a response.
Right, and I'm not saying they all do.
Right.
But, but like, I don't know, there was, there was, uh, the, the gentleman who was really excited about being able to teach the math class, and he provided us a photo. You could even just have something as simple as, a provo, a photo was provided to all the Board members as per requested by that professor. Just anything to make it understandable that we are listening and that we do care. And it's not just, oh, yeah, there were public comments made, but there was no response. When in fact, there have been some where a response might be warranted.
Well, does the, does the item have to have a status heading on it? Jay, they're looking at you, Vice Chancellor Gable.
In, in addition, I don't know if anybody who's ever given public comments knows, oh, by the way, if you want a response, you can request it.
Okay, so I, okay, then, why don't we just remove that, the status, that whole section there? Because I don't think it's, um, I mean, I don't think the expectation is that the, the South Orange County Community College District is going to respond in writing to every public comment that we receive. I think your intent, as I understand it, is to, on certain, um, certain comments that we receive probably do merit a response.
And I, and we've had at least one speaker say, I really would like to hear a response to this. And, and the next meeting, it said, no, none was requested. He requested it verbally.
So let's take out the status. Because that gives us discretion on responding to.
Sure.
I mean, just.
Yeah.
Our soliloquy between you and me here.
Yeah, but I just, I just want to clarify for future, I mean, because I'm looking at even tonight's agenda item. And it says here that the Board requested a standing monthly item be included on the agenda to allow for staff to respond to public comments. So it's not necessarily staff who are making the public comments, who are making the request for a response. It's the Board kind of making the determination. Oh, we, we really do want staff to come back at the next meeting to respond, respond to the public comments. So that would be useful, otherwise, we're just kind of making a judgment, thinking, okay, that's really related to collective bargaining, so we're not going to come back and respond. So, I mean, we could make that.
And in that case, that, that's a good example of where we, we shouldn't be using this for that.
Okay, so I guess I just would want clarification that you want to kind of delegate the authority to the Chancellor to work with her staff to determine when we come back to have a response at the following Board meeting. Or if you want the Board to prompt that.
I'd say a little of both. I'd say you have the discretion and the, the ability to figure out whether or not, again, it's organically would be good to respond. Or any of the Board members can shoot you a message and say, hey, are we going to respond to that? Because, because there's just been a few where I just like, shocked that there's nothing there. But it, again, it's implied that they have to request the response. And I don't know if anyone who's ever given a public comment knows that if they want a response, they have to fill something like, is there a form for them to request it? Do they have to send an email? Like, there's nothing.
So that, what I was suggesting, TJ, is perhaps take out the whole status section. And if you look at the last sentence of the second paragraph, which says, you know, item, should, item be included on the agenda, allow for staff response. Maybe we say allow for staff response as appropriate, or to respond as appropriate to public comments, because that gives discretion. So that would go, um, after respond, in the last sentence of the second paragraph. So it would read, I'll just say, the Board requested that a standing monthly item be included on the agenda to allow for staff to respond as appropriate to public comments, because that, so that gives some discretion.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that? I mean, anyone have any objection? No? Okay. So that's a, I guess, an amendment to the motion? And then the status section is stricken. Oh, go ahead.
Just a friendly comment. You might want to leave status because the status could be, there were public, you know, we received public comments on collective bargaining, which, you know, we can't respond to. So rather than just completely eliminating the status, I think, give us the discretion on having that status section in there and we can.
As is?
Not as is, I think it would be reworded.
Okay.
But I think, you know, for your sake, what you're voting on is really the agenda headers and not necessarily the content of what's written inside the agenda. So we could work on what the language would be under the status at each meeting and it could revise depending upon what happens at each Board meeting.
Instead of having just.
Instead of having it.
I know, instead of having, just setting the language now and having it, but you, okay, this is after we added as.
As appropriate, right.
Okay, so TJ, since you're the maker of this original item, so it'd be customized per meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, it's just, it, up to this, since 2016, I don't think we've had a single response to public comments. Maybe one. And there's been more, way more opportunities to do that than we have been using. And so I really would like to see it utilized.
I mean, I think depends, sometimes it're public comments and we vote on the, there's an, on agenda items and then we vote on that, so that's our expression.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that makes sense.
All right. Okay. I think we have a motion and a second, let's go ahead and vote. All right, 3.13 is approved as amended by a unanimous trustee yes vote. This now concludes our organizational meeting. We are going to pause for a few moments because there have been some officer changes. And we will recess for about 10 minutes to arrange the nameplates as appropriate for the seats on the dais and to update our electronic voting system. So we'll be in recess for about 10 minutes, thank you.
We will now reconvene to the regular open session. And we are now on Board Reports. I think we'll start at this end, so that, what? Public comments. See, I messed up already. Are there any public comments? Thank you. Okay, now we will go to Board Reports. Let's start with trustee Rydel, please.
Good evening, everyone. I will share with you something that I hadn't done in eight years. In this past month, I was able to visit my family again, that I hadn't seen in eight years. I was sitting with my second cousin, Stavisa, and I said to him, are you still driving the VIPs from the airport? Because I remember you did that before. And he says, yeah, I do that every morning. And I said, whoa, I, I, you know, because of how they live, I thought, well, you could do it all day and you can make a little more money. And he said, but then, when when I get to know my grandchildren? I live with my means and toys, they won't remember, but I want them to remember me. And tonight, I'd like to celebrate a woman who has done the same thing. Grace, you have been amazing. You have. You have inspired me with how you treat us and how you tell us about how you treat your family and your friends and your beliefs. And I just want to know, want you to know, as awe, as in awe I was, that was my cousin, that was my blood, because I sure didn't listen to that. And I know that his children would be a lot happier, grandchildren. And I just want to tell you, it was a hard decision and it's hard on us for you to leave, but thank you very much for all you've done.
Well, well said. First, I want to thank Chancellor Barnes and the administration and staff and for the gift today. It's very much appreciated. I, being born President is, is really an honor and having, having done it for two years is, was, was a real joy. And, uh, I, I also want to thank, I did last meeting, but, you know, we did take our list of office today and it's incredible to have my, you know, wife as a Superior Court Judge do that. I'm really grateful to Area Seven voters and for reelecting me. And I, I think I am living proof, and there are others, but I'm living proof, you can be pro balanced budget, against taxes, pro faculty, pro staff, pro education, being independent and not affiliated with any political party, advance the district and still get reelected. So I'm living proof that, that it can happen. And I'm proud to have run an honest and above-board reelection campaign. I thank the, I thank the voters of Area Seven very much for entrusting me again, really to be their voice on this Board. And, and I'm really proud, and of course, it takes team effort, that during my tenure as Board President, Irvine Valley College became the number ranked, number one ranked college in the state of California. Saddleback College, the number five ranked college, college in California, both in the top 15 nationally. And I think you both know, both College Presidents and the staff and faculty here, that I believe, and I think this Board believes, that you're the top two, we have the top two colleges in the state of California. And we're going to keep it that way. And then a couple other things, and my last, I might go over a little today. But welcome to the Board, trustee Bartlet. I think you would be a great addition to the Board, so I extend my welcome hand to you, joining the Board. And then lastly, to Grace. So, um, what, what Grace is like, I think I, I went on the Board in 2012. About halfway, you were here, maybe about 12 years when I got here. Grace is absolutely unflappable. And I think Grace is undoubtedly the rock of, you've got tough shoes to fill, Ryan, by the way. You're going to do it. But Grace is the, the, the rock of the trustee office. It's hard to tell at times whether she liked us or not, it didn't matter. And I, but, but what we always knew that is that Grace was professional. And she was conscientious. She didn't let us deviate from practices that would, were not in the best interests of the district. And she, she ran an efficient job. And I, and I remember, uh, it's hard, you know, Grace doesn't show vulnerability, okay? Because Grace is just focused. She is a, she is a unbelievably professional in what she does. But I remember when we had, um, a few years ago, we had, we, you know, it hasn't always been roses and flowers up here over the years. We've had some difficult times as a Board and with turnover in our leadership. And I remember we had a Chancellor that left here abruptly into retirement. And I remember at the time, I had just become Board President after a few months. And I, I remember driving to the District Office here, I don't know if you remember this. And, because I just felt like the, the needed, that the staff and the administration needed to know that whatever happened on, on the Board level, we still have their back, that we support the staff, we support the faculty, we support the administration. And I remember she said to me, she's like, you know, we work for you too. And I said, I know that. And none of, and all of us up here know that. You know that, we know that you've had our back since we've, since those of us here got elected or reelected. And thank you for what you've done. You've been an amazing resource to the South Orange County Community College District. Enjoy life and thank you for all that you've done.
Wow. Okay, good to follow that. Just a quick report on events that I was able to attend. Feast of Lights, was amazing as always. Really enjoy that on an annual basis. Went to the Nurses' Pining, also very, very enjoyable. Went to IVC's Holiday Mingle. That was really, really nice. Rebranded your, your pen, so we got the new pen. And, and all, all the people there really did look like they were having a great time. Looking forward to Saddlebacks tomorrow. As, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I missed the Teacher of the Year Dinner and then I would give the big reveal after I was allowed to. My daughter got married on October 31st. They went to the courthouse and then we went to dinner to celebrate the night of the Teacher of the Year. So that's why I had to miss. And then we, of course, did a ceremony in Cabo over the Thanksgiving break. So that was even more enjoyable because I got to take part in that. So, hope I'm forgiven on that one. Grace. It was tough officiating my wife's, my daughter's wedding. This is going to be, this is going to be tough, too. I'm just going to kind of go with trustee Jamal and go a little lighthearted on this one. I think the most poignant moment for Grace and my relationship and her professionalism and the way she helped out the trustees and, and worked for us was the night she gave me the blue pen that leaked. And I inadvertently rubbed my face and got blue ink. and created a look that was not all that popular since the 1930s. And it was after the meeting, I was getting on, she's like, that's going to look really funny on camera. And I went, what are you talking about? And she goes, the meetings are filmed. Like, since when? Since you came on the board. I had no idea, no one had told me we were on TV and that, yeah, she was looking out for me.
Can I, can I reveal something right now?
Oh, no.
I saw it. And I didn't tell you because I thought it was pretty funny.
Yeah, great. That's, that's awesome. Appreciate that. Know who your friends are. So, yeah, Grace, Grace looked out for me, but in the same moment, revealed that no one was looking out for me. So, thank you. But yeah, you are going to be missed, I was joking with someone earlier that when this meeting adjourns, we're going to see a puff of smoke and glow, where, where did Grace go? Because she's out of here, she's so looking forward to being with the grandkids and as trustee Rydell alluded to, family first and, and we get that. We don't like it, but we get it. So, thank you for everything you've done.
All right, I will start my board report. So I was fortunate enough to go to the Pancakes and Partners event on December 3rd and I would like to call out IVC mechanical engineer, ing student Haley Barrios for sharing her inspirational life story and work on designing 3D printed prosthetics, I learned a lot at that event and I hope that we continue doing something like that going forward. I'm going to echo what trustee Prendergast mentioned, I had also gone to the IVC Holiday Mingle as well as the Saddleback Nurses Pinning, both on December 3rd and December 9th. And I'm looking forward to Saddleback's event tomorrow. I'm, you know, not the newest member on the board anymore, but, you know, I still haven't been on here as long as most folks and one of the first people I met was Grace, we had, I think it was, I don't know, it was in this room, there was a really long table and she was at the end and she's like, all right, you know, let's get started. Are you, do you want a big binder delivered to you every month when it comes to our board agenda? I'm like, no, I, I think I'm okay, and she's like, good, because it'll take a long time to print. So I always remember that, I, I'm really glad that she even offered, to be honest, in my mind, I'm like, why would you even offer that anymore? That's such a waste of paper when you could just access it all from the iPad that they give you. But, I don't know, she, she's always been accommodating for all things whenever I've asked, you know, she was there and helped and it's, you're going to be missed. Hopefully Ryan can fill those shoes, I've seen good stuff from Saddleback when you've been at the head of events and such, so I, I feel that that will be the case, but, you know, it's, it's not going to be an easy road for you. So just, you know, keep that in mind. Thank you, that's the end of my report.
Trustee Bartlett.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's, it's really an honor to be elected to the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees, trustee Area 3. It's certainly a privilege to serve, I've been in elective office before and people who know me know I, I have a passion for public service, so I'm really excited to be on board here, I think I can contribute a lot and look forward to also working with my trustee colleagues and chancellor Barnes, our college presidents, John Hernandez and Elliot Stern, our amazing staff and our students here as well. I think we've got a lot of good hard, hard work ahead of us, but we're really anxious to get started. And Grace, it's been great knowing you for six days. You're amazing, I know you've contributed so much to the college over the years and Ryan's got some big shoes to fill, but he did my onboarding and did a fantastic job, so he learned very quickly and you trained him well. And as you step away, I'm sure he'll, he'll take over and he'll do a great job. I also attended the Feast of Lights here and it's, it's an amazing event and look forward to attending year after year as well, and I know we've got some other great events coming up at the colleges, so, and some ribbon cuttings as well, so look forward to participating and anyone can reach out to me at any time, I have an open door policy, so if you want to just pick up the phone, give me a call, grab a cup of coffee, just chat about anything, ideas for the colleges or just get to know me better. Don't hesitate to, to give me a call or get in touch with me, now that I know our meetings are filmed, I'm not going to give out my cellphone number. But if you, just, you can reach out to any of the staff and they'll know how to get ahold of me, so thank you, it's great to be on board. Happy holidays.
Okay, thank you. First of all, we wish all of our incredible students good luck on your finals this week and I, we, we try to get you out of here so you can study. And sincere, sincere congratulations to four, to all four elected board members. Our newest board member, Lisa Bartlett, is a Saddleback College alum. Then supervisor Bartlett allocated all of her left, leftover federal pandemic relief funds to Saddleback College to support student emergency grants and they used these grants for several years. She also attended our gala, so thank you trustee Bartlett for supporting our college and we're looking forward to working with you and working with all of you. I'm looking forward also to attending Professional Development Meet Week where we meet people where they work and learn the hopes and dreams for the upcoming spring semester. This kicks off on January 7th with both presidents' opening sessions and IVC's presenter is on tonight's agenda. At the inaugural IVC Partners in Pancakes Breakfast at ATEP, it featured an excellent panel, discussions with chancellor Barnes, the president of the Orange County Business Council, the director of Edwards Life, Edwards Life Sciences and a prominent CPA and a proud IVC alum. I'm excited about these meaningful partnerships to ensure our colleges remain a premier source of career-ready talent to our communities. Chemistry professor Sam Abbas invited us to the Students Innovation Lab poster session. The students explained their research findings, the biology, this biology professor loved it, especially the students exploring biomarkers on, in the Mars regolith. I attended the 2024 CIF State Championship Bowl Games at Saddleback College in the warm ferry room. Matt Brodet, who tries his best to make me look good while filming our board meetings, showed me the enormous professional cameras and crew filming these playoffs and televising Saddleback's state-of-the-art stadium nationwide. I hope the Saddleback recruits some of these fabulous high school football players and cheerleaders for our Bobcats and I hope they choose Saddleback. I also attended the IVC Holiday Mingle, the District Services Holiday Luncheon, and I'm looking forward to the, the Saddleback College Holiday Event tomorrow. Most of us attended the nurse pinning ceremony and I purchased drought-resistant plants at the horticulture plant sale. We thank Grace Garcia, I said something last meeting, but we thank Grace Garcia for her outstanding service to our board for over 25 years and wish you a splendid retirement. Your professional, hardworking and kind, so now you have time to play with your grandkids and sleep, sleep late. So, sincere, sincere good luck to you, Grace, you certainly deserve it. And we wish all of you a restful and joyful holiday season and look forward to seeing you rested and ready to begin another successful year, successful semester next year, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say a couple of things for, in terms of time. I went to the CCLA, CCLC Annual Convention and I really like what I can learn from the, from conferences. I did that when I was in other leadership kinds of things and, you know, one of the main things you learn is you talk to people from other colleges and you find out that they've solved some problem that you were finding challenging. And there's just so, so much that goes on and at that, we had a incredible presentation by Cindy and Dr. Barnes and the whole thing was, was just really very, very informative and, and good, I think. I loved the District Services Holiday Party. It's so important to appreciate everybody that works here and District Services sometimes gets, you know, it's not one of the colleges, it's something else and so I'm glad that they, they got some recognition and I want to shout out to Leah who has, had done so much for us already and who did a great deal for that event and it was really close to perfect. I went to my second foundation meeting as the interim and now I'm happy to, to be permanent to that because there's nothing as important really as scholarships and helping students and, you know, money talks, money's needed and it's really happy. We had a Giving Day, they call it, and we raised $141,000 on that one day. So it's, it's just skyrocketed each year as the amount of money has increased. The gala is coming up March 7th and they would love to have sponsorships, but it also could be as simple as auction items. So that's all I have for this time, but I would like to also thank Grace for everything. One of my best friends has a granddaughter named Grace and calls her Amazing Grace. So I'm just going to steal that and call you Amazing Grace and I want to thank you for everything you've done. As a matter of fact, if you would like, should we make, come up here? Come up here, please. We have a few little things for you. So you'll probably look at them when you get down there, but people have expressed lots of love and appreciation, so here are some different cards. And then, what does this, what is it?
What is it?
I don't know. It's, do you want to open it?
Do you want me to open it for you? You did it tonight, yeah.
I think it's. Let me open.
It's like a personal gift, so maybe.
Oh, okay, we'll just give it to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you all. Maybe you want to hold the card up and all the board members?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
There's a tension down there.
This is like a picture. These red jackets.
How are all the reds?
Okay, now it's time for the other reports. So we're, let's start with associated student government reports.
Good evening, members of the board, I'd like to start by thanking trustee Tim Jamal for his hard work as president for making Saddleback and IVC top community colleges here in California. To everyone here, Tim Jamal is my trustee, I live in Area 7 and I was very proud to vote for him for the first time in this most recent election. To trustee Inman and to vice, to president Inman and vice president Dak, I would like to say congratulations and I look forward to our conversations going into 2025. I'd also like to say congratulations to trustee Lisa Bartlett for her election and I also look forward to working with you as well. ASG has had a productive year in both the spring and fall semesters of 2024, passing the menstrual equity initiative to provide these medical products across campus was a signature accomplishment in the spring semester. The fall semester was a unique one since some ASGs don't have the weight of a presidential election on them. However, our associate student government was prepared by passionately informing our peers about the election with our Meet the Candidate events by inviting candidates from house races from the 40th and 49th congressional districts, as well as placing 20th among all community colleges in the ballot bowl with 331 students registered through that competition. For the first time since the pandemic in 2020, we have filled every available position in ASG. We have provided over $40,000 in off-cycle funding to departments for student travel and events. Throughout the, throughout our, throughout the year, our IDSC and events committees have partnered with our Equity, Inclusion and Access Office to provide programs and support for Latinx Heritage Month, LGBT History Month, Undocumented Student Action Week and Native American Heritage Month. While I reflect on our accomplishments, this 2024 is equally important to also look into the coming year. We have picked our delegation for the ASAC Conference in Washington DC to meet with our local congressional staffs to advocate for community college needs. This delegation is made up of diverse minds who care passionately, care passionately about policy. I'm looking forward to attending with my counterpart ASIVC president Clarice Encarnacion, which will be fun since we are both seasoned attendees from last year too. We also continue to hold events for Black History Month, Women's History Month and other heritage and identity-based celebrations and awareness events this spring. As this year is closing, I'd like to thank everyone in this room who has been nothing short of kind and compassionate towards me. I am very privileged to have this role, I'd like to thank president Stern, vice president Vokomoto, vice president Corey Wathan, Dr. LaBounty, Dr. Scaff, Mr. Ryan Brook, who have helped me tremendously in this role. Finally, this week is finals week and I'd like to, I'd like to ask everyone to wish the students of Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College good luck with their essays, research or final tests. And with that, that is the end of my report, thank you very much.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College.
Good afternoon, I'm filling in for Clarice today as the executive vice president of ASIVC. As this semester comes to a close, ASIVC has supported students, especially during this critical time leading up to finals. Over the past month, we've hosted a series of de-stress events designed to help our students recharge and stay focused. From pet therapy to other wellness activities, these events gave everyone a chance to breathe, reset and tackle their exams with confidence. In addition, we successfully compute, completed our DC application this month, giving five students opportunity to get in more involved and amplify their voices at DC. On top of that, ASIVC has also allocated $4,000 in funds for a memorable commencement ceremony and investment to honor the hard work and achievements of our graduating class. Overall, it's been a busy and productive month and we're finishing strong with these initiatives, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the academic senate from IVC.
Thank you trustee Inman and congratulations to all of you on your new roles. I have a couple of announcements, first, I'm pleased to share that our academic senate as IVC, at IVC, excuse me, has successfully concluded our elections for the upcoming term and I am honored to let you know that I will be serving as senate president for another term and I'm honored for that as well, alongside with a full cabinet of dedicated faculty members. And I want to express my appreciation to my fellow cabinet members for their commitment to shared governance and our student success. I also want to take a moment to recognize the work of our faculty as we continue to work on the revisions needed for the Common Course numbering Assembly Bill 1111. And again, this has not been an easy task, it already is a complex and challenging work, as some of you may know, of carrying on teaching and then doing curriculum revisions at the same time. And so our faculty are going above and beyond engaging in convenings, following detailed course templates and also completing this thorough course revision. So I wanted to really give a shout out to our faculty through the faces as we're moving along the, for us to be ready for the legislation and phase one, which is fall 2025. Next, as we approach the end of the year, I'd like to wish all of you a joyful and restful holiday season and we continue to look forward to our continued collaboration with you in the new year as we remain focused on serving our students and our campus community. And lastly, I do want to wish all of our students success with their finals and with their papers, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Academic senate, Saddleback.
Hi, I am not Dan Walsh, Dan could not be here because of his SVUSD board obligations. So my name is Frank Gonzalez, I am president-elect for the academic senate at Saddleback College. I also teach math and I know most of you here, so. Dan only had one thing he wanted me to speak on and so I had to write it down. So last academic senate meeting, the Saddleback College senate voted unanimously on two important sustainability-focused items. First, we chose Senator Morgan Barrows, environmental studies professor, as our sustainability senator. Second, we recognized the outdoor environmental studies certified wildlife lab classroom as a dedicated and protected instructional lab. For those of you that don't know, this lab slash classroom space is on the other side of the OTAS building, between OTAS and the road. This outdoor classroom is a certified wildlife habitat that focuses on natural ecological systems that are native to Southern California. This outdoor classroom is critical to the curriculum of the Environmental Studies Department, like the greenhouses to horticulture or the observatory to astronomy. Students are able to observe species interactions, conduct field experiments and apply technical skills learned in the classroom such as ecological restoration and water testing. So why the recognition now? The reason we chose to recognize it now is in the state chancellor's office vision 2030, one of the actions that supports several of the strategic directions in the plan is climate action, specifically using climate action to advance community college engagements with the four fields of climate practice. And we believe this outdoor classroom has and will continue, can continue to be an important role in this engagement as environmental sustainability plays an ever-increasing part in both our colleges and districts' future. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Faculty Association.
Hello and good evening. So again, congratulations to all the faculty or.
So again, congratulations to all the faculty, or all the, all the board members that were sworn in today. I'd like to send a special warm welcome also to trustee Bartlett. The faculty, and especially as my role as Faculty Association President, I look forward to working with you in the coming years and kind of advocating, understanding, and working together to understand the needs of faculty for this district. I am excited to work with you, as I know you do bring in a new, a different perspective and a wealth of experience, especially in public office. And I'd like to work with you and kind of see how you understand and even can help with kind of understanding more of what goes on on the faculty side of the House when it comes to this district. So welcome again. I am also going to take you up on that offer for a coffee, so just expect that. So a lot of times when I do reach out to not only board members, but even to administrators and even people at the district, it's not usually kind of positive, and I acknowledge that. But that said, I would like to thank a group of people tonight. And I think we should always kind of focus on the positive when we can and deal with the dirty stuff when we have to, too. But we obviously had a new contract that we just ratified not too long ago. And surprisingly enough, there were a lot of kind of ramifications to that in trying to make sure things were kind of correct, that we were making sure to implement, but even looking at it from the standpoint of what we currently were doing practices-wise and trying to see if we can implement that new kind of contract language. So to that, I would like to thank the VPIs Miranda and Vu Komodo, Presidents Hernandez and Stern, and Vice Chancellor Viscachill and McDonald, all of which I worked with personally on a number of different issues over probably the past two and a half-ish months here. And I would like to say that all those were resolved, I think, successfully on both sides. So I do appreciate that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate?
Good evening, everyone, and a very warm welcome to our newest trustee, trustee Bartlett. So for Classified Senate at IVC, we had a very successful Thanksgiving turkey drive last November 25th. We raised over 2,300 and provided Thanksgiving baskets and turkeys to 100 students and their families in need. A special shout out to the team that organized this event, particularly Angela Mahaney, Robert Flurnoy, Haley King, and Brianna Bell. We also want to thank many of the departments and colleagues that supported us and helped us and donated, such as the Food Resource Center, our college core program, EOPS, our administrators and managers, and many of our colleagues from the Faculty Senate. On the same day, we also had a successful lunch and learn where we had a workshop on optimizing Outlook and how to organize your email inbox. We're already busy working on some of the programming for the upcoming spring semester, such as, the biggest one is our hosting of the Senate's, where we will be hosting other Classified Senate leaders from different community colleges across the state. Lastly, on behalf of my colleagues from Classified Senate, we wish everyone a happy and peaceful holidays and a relaxing winter break.
Thank you. Saddleback College Classified Senate?
So Erlin is not here tonight. I will be reading her report on her behalf. So good evening, trustees and Chancellor Barnes. Please accept my apologies for not being able to join you in person this evening. In an effort to prioritize everyone's health, I'm staying home tonight. As we wrap up the fall semester, I'm happy to share an update from the Classified Senate Executive Team at Saddleback. We recently had a planning meeting for the spring term, during which we finalized several initiatives. We're excited to welcome new employees in February with our first onboarding session of the year and have scheduled monthly professional development opportunities for our classified staff. Based on feedback from our members, we've decided to focus these sessions on key areas, such as artificial intelligence, maximizing the use of Microsoft 365, accessibility, and conflict resolution. This semester has been a wonderful one for the engagement with our classified professionals. They've shown tremendous dedication to the college and our students by contributing their time and energy to events like Bobcat Days, as well as special initiatives such as SANTA's workshops for student parents. I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to everyone who donated wrapping paper. Your generosity made a meaningful difference for our student parents, allowing them to choose and wrap gifts for their children this holiday season. As we look ahead, we're all eagerly anticipating some well-deserved rest over the winter break, and we're excited to return in the spring with renewed energy to continue supporting our students and community. Thank you for your ongoing support, and I wish everyone a peaceful and restorative holiday. And I think me and Erlin can agree, we would like to also recognize another one classified member from our district who has led our union so well, and Scott Green. So just like to give him a quick shout out tonight as well.
Thank you. We now have the California School Employees Association.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, ACE, for that. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I ask Madam President for forgiveness in advance if I go over a little bit. For tonight is my very last time at the governance table as I address the Board of Trustees after nearly 12 years. I don't know what it's going to be like not being able to come to each and every Board of Trustee meeting and not sit here at the governance table, addressing, giving you news from CSEA. But one thing that I am grateful for is the fact that this set of Board of Trustees, I felt so privileged to be able to get to know you and to actually be able to talk issues with you and be able to work with you. And so I'm so incredibly grateful for this set of Board of Trustees. I also want to feel is that even though that this is at the end of my term, I feel absolutely 100% privileged that the one person who is in the chancellor's seat is the one of the best chancellors that we've had, leading this district. Dr. Barnes, I think so highly of you. I, I absolutely am grateful because when you first came here, you started out with your 100 Days of Listening Tour, and you listened to us, CSEA, the Classified, right away, no questions asked, and we so appreciate that. I've, I've been feeling so incredibly grateful over the years, the fact that I've been able to work with people at the district level. I, I think of Dr. Cindy Viscachill, who, when she first came here, approached me and said, "We're going to work with the classified. We want to make sure that you are heard." And that was so refreshing to hear when we had people reaching out to CSEA. I also want to thank Dr. Chris McDonald, who, when there were fantasy stories out there, you know, he actually made sure what was the truth and was willing to tell me right away what the real story is. Anne Marie Gable, I thank you so much, especially during the pandemic. You made sure that even though all of us were on Zoom, that the voice of CSEA was still heard. And every month you did that and did that well, and thank you so much. Also, other people that I would like to thank, Connie Kavanaugh, Connie Ramos, Priya Jerome, Letitia Clark. I also feel so grateful, Grace, of what you were able to do. And there were a lot of times there where we had to communicate between CSEA and the chancellor, and you made sure that happened. And you did such a fine job. I've known you for years. You are going to be missed, so. And I also want the Board of Trustees to know that the people that I work closely with almost every single day was Executive Director Kim Wittes, who made a lot of things happen because of our open communication. Danielle Heinbach was another person who I had a meeting on a regular basis so that we could actually get things done between CSEA and the district. And I want to really also thank the two presidents that I've been able to have an open communication with, Dr. Stern and Dr. Hernandez. Thank you so much for speaking with me. There were a lot of things we were able to talk about and a lot of things that we were able to remedy. And even though that sometimes there were things that we weren't always able to solve right away, we found remedies. This whole experience about leading nearly 600 people as your, as the president, sometimes you take a lot of hits. I felt sometimes I was a whack-a-mole because I was constantly getting hit with things that may either been out of my control or people perceive something differently. And, but what I really did love about this job was helping people. That outweighed everything. If I can help improve the lives of our members and make their working conditions better, maybe affect their lives on a permanent basis in which it benefited them, that was all worth it. That's why I kept wanting to be in the volunteer role as CSEA president. I'm going to miss it because I love being the president. But it is important to plan for the future. I cannot be selfish about it and say, because I love this job, I should be the only one in it. What matters is you want to make sure that people know how to do this job and take the roles of leadership and be able to keep this union, this great union, keep it intact, and make sure that the future is bright for them as well. So I thank you very much. It's going to be very, very odd. In this seat next month will be the new CSEA president, the current president-elect, Desiree Ortiz. So for the first time in nearly 12 years, someone different will be in this seat. But I thank you so very much, and I thank all the people that I've been able to work with. This has truly been a privilege and a pleasure, and I've enjoyed every single second of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam President? Point of personal privilege? So I think you and I came on at the same time. You became president of CSEA when I was elected as a trustee about 12 years ago. And Scott, I just want to say you've been an amazing articulate and simply a great partner over the last 12 years. You know, I, I do have great respect for the faculty, for the administration. Of course, our students I love. But I do have a kind of a soft heart for the classified staff because you are, you know, you're the unsung heroes of, of what we do here at the Community College District. And whether it's groundskeeping or maintenance, or audiovisual support, or IT support. I mean, you are, without the classified staff, without the union, we aren't the great district that we are. And your presence here at the board meetings added so much value to what we do. And I know you took a lot of hits. Yeah, being president, you take some hits. I understand that. And you've, you've handled it with eloquent, eloquence and with grace. By God, it seems like you're connected to every president since Reconstruction in some way, so. Your lineage is very impressive, and, and I think CSEA has been in good hands, great hands, with you at the helm, and I think with Desiree coming on board will continue to be in great hands. So kudos to you. I am going to miss you. I loved hearing your reports. I love being at the board meeting. You and I came in together. I'm staying on for a bit. We'll see how much longer, but, but we will miss you. Great job.
And on behalf of everybody, thank you so much for all that you have done to represent your organization. So, so great. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo that. Thank you so much for all you've done for Saddleback College or Saddleback College employees, and we hope to continue working with you in, in different positions. So we're looking forward to that. Okay, thank you so much.
And as a personal note, I will make every effort to make it to Scott's Fest and meet you at the whiskey bar. And if I may, a personal recommendation, Aberfeldy. You need to try it.
Okay, is, is there anybody here from Police Officers Association? Okay, just a moment. What, what time is it?
It's 8:30.
Okay. All right. 410 is Board Requests for Reports.
So I would just, I have more of a question for me here on 10 or this item number. I put in a board request for report, and it said there was a report attached, but it looks like it is just my request for a report. So was that, was a staff report generated? Does that need to be rectified?
So just as a matter of protocol, so what we talked about last time was, so there was a discussion about the possibility of making a request. But so the process was to actually complete the form, and then the board formally votes on it at this meeting. And then the staff will have to take some time to fulfill the request.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
I have some questions on this item. Okay, so we do, we have a census every 10 years, and then we do a redistricting. So what is, is there some legally compelling reason for doing another, trying to do another redistricting? I don't even know if that's legal to do without having census data.
Well, I'll, I'll speak to my, my request reason. And it mostly has to do with there being arbitrary splits in city, I guess, between districts. Like there's one precinct that is in Area 1 that is from Tustin, and where there really should be no reason for that. So it's more just to clean up lines, and the feasibility study is a request for legality, cost, and timeline. My understanding of state law, after having gone through this and talking to some other people, is that if there are too many arbitrary city splits, that could result in a lawsuit on some level. So I didn't come at this from a, let's protect the board from a lawsuit, but it has occurred to me that that may be a possibility. So I would like to just see what the feasibility of redrawing these districts mid-decade would be just to limit city splits. And then, and how much would it cost? What would timelines look like? And so on.
Okay. Okay, because I know there are a number of city splits right now. So you're talking about maybe one precinct going from one city into a different trustee district? And just, or are you talking about like a major overhaul of?
Aliso Viejo is split between two districts. Laguna Woods is split between two districts. Laguna Niguel, no, Laguna Hills is split between two districts. There are, and a number of cities that are kind of just split in half when you could theoretically keep them all contained within one district.
And that might be the challenge because you've got Irvine, Newport, Tustin, Aliso Viejo, Dana Point, Laguna Niguel, Rancho Santa Margarita, Laguna Woods, Lake Forest, Mission Viejo, Aliso Viejo, Rancho Santa Margarita. So you've, we have a number of splits, and I, it's hard enough, like with five supervisory districts, to try to keep cities whole within districts. But when you're talking about seven trustee areas, that gets to be super challenging. And I'm not sure that, you know, that's going to be attainable to try to keep cities whole.
Well, I think that this is a request for exactly that, to ask the question, is it possible? Is it legal? Is it doable? How much would it cost? So we could see what they come back out, come back with.
Okay.
And, and I agree, while there are more than seven cities within the area for seven trustees, there are, and he gave specific examples of the last meeting. Like I, my area, too, is primarily Tustin. But there's a piece of mine that goes into Irvine, and there's a piece of another area that's primarily Irvine that goes into Tustin a little bit. Why not just make that all Tustin and all Irvine? So there, and his district where it's kind of split off into, some of Mission Viejo is in another area. And then he has part of Laguna Woods, but then trustee Milczek has part of Mission Viejo and not all of, it just, it, it was odd at the time, but it was presented in a way that we really couldn't fix it at the time. So, but those concerns were brought up at that time, and they just were kind of ignored in a, in a way. So, yeah, I think, I think it's just a matter of finding out, is it possible? Is there, was there a reasoning why it wasn't more congruent in some of those cases? But it certainly, yeah, your, your point is very well made. It wouldn't be, okay, this person gets this city, this person gets that city. But at the same time, do you need to split any cities? Can you not keep them somewhat whole within that, if possible?
And I know in my district, it's, it's really challenging because I have, I think, four whole, four whole cities, and then I've got a part, a little bit of Irvine, and then I've got little fingers that go into Newport Beach.
Right.
And it's really hard to track, to some extent, those, those areas. I think it's by the toll road. And so I, I assume they were wanting to be compliant with the Voting Rights Act, and that's why for population and for the census. And that's why for population and for the census compliance, they had to section it off that way.
Trustee, can I say something? So I've spoken on this issue a lot. I, I think all the good points have been made. I, at the time, I think when we did the, when they did 2020 census and we did the, when we moved to area voting from at-large voting, I think there was large dissatisfaction on the board with the districts that were drawn for a lot of the reasons elucidated tonight. Unfortunately, I don't believe that process was managed well, frankly. And we were put in a position to having to vote on, on, I think, two or three maps were presented us. We spent a year. We had several public hearings. I'm sorry? During COVID. Nevertheless, I, I, I think we can all point out I have lots of dissatisfaction, you know, with how my area was drawn. But at the same time, I'm grateful that even with the, you know, with the redistricting, you know, I was successful in getting reelected. So I can't, I think we need to, we can look at the feasibility of it. But I think it's very challenging to do something mid-census. I, I feel like this is a really perilous route. I, I think the reasons, I think you're right, I understand the rationale. But I think doing it mid-stream is very problematic. Even though, if I can say this, that I, I might agree with what, what the new maps would be proposed. But I do think it's dangerous to do so. So that's what I wanted to say.
And, you know, I would just add one more thing. If you're thinking of every city within Orange County and you want to think of what is a city that has, that is like the most community of interest city ever? And that city in my mind is Laguna Woods. An entire community that you have to be over a certain age to be in, to even live there. That is, in my mind, one of the strongest arguments for a community of, of interest. And that is split between two districts. So even if it's just minor, where it's putting one precinct over here and making that city whole, there are some bigger ones that I am very concerned about. I think splitting Laguna Woods between two districts is, is problematic. And that's probably the biggest issue I have.
So I understand the district representation. But when we're talking about the seven trustee districts and our students, and you talk about representation for the students out in the community at large, it's not like high schools where if you live in a certain city, you're relegated to go to a certain high school. You can live as a student in any one of our seven districts and we welcome you to go to any of the three colleges that we have. So with regard to student representation per se, students aren't getting disenfranchised. Because regardless of where they live, they're welcome to go to any of the three colleges that we have. So I think looking at it at this, you know, from the student perspective and representation of the students, the, the approach that we need to take is does it disenfranchise the students in any way? And it really doesn't because they're open to go anywhere. Somebody from Mission Viejo can go to Irvine Valley College and somebody from, you know, lives in Laguna Woods can go to Saddleback College. So I think from that perspective, and I, I agree with trustee Jamal, I think it is very problematic to try to work on something like a redistricting mid-census cycle. We had the census done a couple of years ago. I don't know of any elected body that's gone out and even tried to do a major redistricting. We've all been elected to our districts for four-year terms. What do we tell the voters? Oh, we decided to make a change. So I think for a whole host of reasons. And just the, the, being prudent with the taxpayer dollars, I'm not sure it's a good use of expenditure of taxpayer dollars to go forth in something that isn't really, it's not legally compelling. And I'm just not sure we'd even get the desired result because we've got so many splits right now. But it's not disenfranchising any students at all. So those are just my comments. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is a, a request for staff to look at this and come back. And I suspect we'll have a similar discussion when, when they do that. So for now, let's move on. Oh, okay. I entertain a motion.
Oh, all right, I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Just to clarify. Just to clarify, this is a requesting the staff at administration to look at the feasibility of doing a redistricting prior to the next redistricting, which would be, I think, in 2030.
Right.
Yeah, I read it as, is it, is it something that, is it legal? Is it doable? Is there a reason we should do it? Those, I think that's all part of the, the request in the report. It's not to actually do it.
Right.
Yeah, no, it's not that. Can I say something?
Quickly.
Okay, what? You know, this is a request to, to, to have staff put together a feasibility study. And I assume the first thing they'll do is see if it's legal. So is there somebody in staff that could tell us how much work that would be to do this feasibility study? Because I, you know, chances are we'll do the feasibility study, we, we might not decide to move ahead and do it. So chancellor Barnes, do you know or does somebody else know?
Yeah, we're, we're following up with our, our legal team to determine the legality piece of it. So at this point, it's just, again, getting clarification on what's being asked of staff for the next or for a future board meeting.
So it shouldn't take that much staff time to determine the legal feasibility of it, right?
It will take staff time to put this together for sure.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, on a five to two vote, this passes, this motion for information. Okay, so let's go on. I do entertain a motion to extend the time since it's already eight forty-seven. To nine thirty perhaps?
Second? Or no, entertaining motion, I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can we do this just by acclamation or do we have to?
We need a vote.
We need a real vote? Okay, so let's all vote now to extend. So the motion on a seven to zero vote, it carries. And so we will extend this to nine thirty. Okay, number five is public hearings, there are none. Number six, resolutions, there are none. Number seven, board of trustees and the chancellor, seven point one. Do I turn it to you?
Ten, you're doing ten point one?
No, seven point one.
So this is where we nominate the chancellor?
Oh, no. It's the CCT Board of Directors. Does anyone, would any trustee like to run for the CCT Board of Directors? Because then we'll, we'll, I'll nominate you if anyone would like to run.
I learned my lesson.
I learned my lesson too.
And do not nominate.
No, because we, we just, we run and we don't win. It's a statewide election.
Carolyn.
We, we have never, we have never gotten a trustee to serve on the.
Trustee Inman, are you interested?
You want to be the first one to try? Okay.
Well, I don't mind running and I do go to the conferences. I think it's a long shot, but why not?
Is there any other interest?
I'll nominate, I'll nominate Carolyn Inman to be our designated nominee to run for the CCT Board of Directors. And we, we know you'll represent us really well.
And I'll second that. For the campaign.
You gotta look at the exhibit. So you're.
I think I ran once when I was new. Yeah.
I think you did. I ran, I ran three times.
There's one?
And I was sure I was going to win one of those times.
Yeah, we're not nominating one of us. We're voting for the people that are already on the slate.
Really?
We, the nomination for this was previous board meetings.
And we don't.
This is, yeah, we all.
Oh, it says call for nomination memo.
That's what it says, but.
It's a nomination, you're wrong. TJ, you're wrong.
Will be accepted January first through February fifteenth nominations.
Yeah, where did you get it was, you know, you didn't read the agenda. Just kidding.
Okay.
Now wait. It says seven seats up, four incumbents.
Right.
Are eligible for reelection. The remaining three seats are open due to board members stepping off their local boards.
In the second paragraph, it says it's from January first through February fifteenth. Nominations will be accepted.
Yeah, so they're basically accepting nominations to serve on the board for the California Community College Trustees through the league. There's seven seats up for election and there's four incumbents. So you see on the document.
So there are three, three vacant seats. So there, there'll be three openings in the state probably.
Yeah, so it sounds like there was, there was already a motion on the table to nominate.
Yeah, so do we vote on that?
Yeah.
That nomination? Okay, we need a motion then, I guess.
Grace, can you clarify? What are, what are we being asked to do? Because the exhibit one of three does make it sound like we're supposed to nominate someone to run.
That's what it is.
And then, but the last part makes it look like we're supposed to choose from the list for seven people.
No, we're supposed to nominate someone from our board to run the, between, and then there, then the election will be hold, I think, starting in March. So this, we're supposed to decide today. We don't have to nominate anybody.
Right.
There's no mandate that we nominate anybody. It's only if we decide we want to. And we have, you're right, tried unsuccessfully a number of times. So chancellor Barnes, what's your assessment of things at the league in terms of the board composition right now?
I mean, knowing that there's seven seats and four incumbents, I mean, that means you got three open seats. But it is, obviously, we've noted that it's a very competitive process because we've tried.
There's seventy-three districts, right chancellor Barnes? And so there's, if one trustee runs from every district and there's three openings, because usually the incumbents get reelected, it, it doesn't make it very, it makes it very competitive.
Well, no, it's very competitive. That's, there's no argument about that. So do we vote on this? Is this a voting thing?
It is.
Okay, all right. So it has been moved and seconded. That trustee Inman will run for this. All in favor, let's go ahead and vote please.
I don't think we got a second because we were deciding whether we were supposed to do it.
I nominated you, so was there a second? I made the nominee, I nominated you.
He made the motion.
Was there a second?
Was there a second?
Was there a second?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, so let's vote please. Okay, on a seven to zero vote, this has been passed unanimously. Okay, seven point two, board policy revision for review and study.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Let's move this along. Yeah, go ahead.
You what? Oh, yeah, it is. Okay, is there any discussion on this, these policies for review and study? Okay, if not, then let's vote on these policies, please.
Do we need a motion and a second?
Review and study, seven point two.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I move.
And? Second?
I already moved it.
You did?
Yes.
Was it already seconded?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay. Any further discussion? Now we can vote. Okay, on a seven to zero vote, this has been passed. Let's go on to seven point three. These were studied last time, so this is a vote for approval. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote please. Okay, on a seven to zero vote, this has passed. Okay, for eight, presentation, there is none. Now we go to nine, the consent calendar.
Second.
Don't we have to ask if anyone has a poll?
You're supposed to ask for polls.
No, you ask before there's a motion.
Yeah, so can you rescind your, do you mind rescinding your motion? And I rescind my second.
Okay, are there any polls for nine, any of these fourteen things?
Madam President, I don't have a poll of an item. I just need to abstain from nine point two because I was not present for that board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So I think that, that has to be polled then.
Okay, then I'll poll nine point two.
Then I move approval of all of the agenda items with the exception of nine point two, is that it?
Okay.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent calendar except for nine point two. Let's vote please. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Oh. I'm trying to look over there. Okay, the, on a seven, seven to zero vote, this is passed. And now let's go back to nine point two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass nine point two. On a six to zero vote with one abstention, this passes. Okay, we're now going on to number ten, business services, ten point one.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Pendergast. Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, let's vote please. On a seven to zero vote, this passes. Next is ten point two, Irvine Valley College Student Services Center and Student Union Project.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Pendergast and seconded by trustee Milchiker. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote please. On a seven to zero vote, this passes. Let's go on to, excuse me, ten point three, OFCI Equipment for Saddleback College Campus Wide.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Milchiker. Oh, sorry, trustee Rydell. Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, let's vote please. Seven to zero vote, it passes. Seven to zero vote, it passes. Let's go on to section eleven, human resources. Eleven point one, academic employees and management personnel actions. And management personnel actions.
No changes.
Thank you.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Milchiker. It has been moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion? Let's vote please. Let's vote please. On a seven to zero vote, the vote, the item passes. Eleven point two, classified personnel actions ratifications.
No changes. I make a motion to pass this, but I have two comments to make after it's seconded.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Rydell. Is there any discussion?
I just want to mention two longtime employees that are retiring because I think it's good to honor our employees when they're here and when they retire. First of all, Margaret Blazing Game at IBC is, is, works in the Mac computer science engineering building. And she worked here for almost fourteen years. And Lori Paraba is the EOP specialist at Saddleback College. And she has worked at Saddleback for over forty years.
Whoa.
We thank them for their long years of great service to our college. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote please. On a seven to zero vote, this passes. That was, okay. Eleven point three, California School Employees Association, chapter five.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Jamal and seconded by trustee Pendergast. Is there any discussion? Let's vote please. On a seven to zero vote, this passes. Number twelve, educational and technology services.
I'm on a different item.
We just did that.
We just did that. So we're on twelve point one.
We're on twelve point one. Is there a motion?
No.
Okay. I don't, do, do we just, is there? Okay. Twelve point one, final action in public session, Saddleback College Student Discipline. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Milchiker. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please vote, or not all in favor. It's time for the vote. It's time for the vote. On a seven to zero, this passes. 12.2, Revisions to the 2024.
So moved.
Second. And I want to thank Vice Chancellor McDonald for answering my questions on this item.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a seven to zero vote, that passes. Number 13 is information items. We have staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting, the list of board requested reports, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers, facilities plan status report, and 13.5, monthly financial status report. Information items. Okay, 14, 14.1, reports from administration. Okay, with Dr. Stern. Oh, okay.
I'll be happy to start. All right, just a couple things. First, I know he wasn't able to stay the whole time, but I do want to extend my appreciation to Scott Green for 12 years of wonderful leadership and service to the CSEA. He is obviously a very, a true advocate for our classified professionals, and he was a pleasure to work with. So thank you to Scott Green. And I will be looking forward to working with Desiree when she steps in next month. And then, second, I just want to add my, my thanks and appreciation to the wonderful Grace Garcia. I think, you know, everyone knows that she's one of the most knowledgeable people here in our district and runs a tight ship and knows, you know, knows, knows the job. And she does it with professionalism and grace, so to speak. But one of the things that I think a lot of people, you know, they don't get to see the, the other side of Grace that I get to see daily. And, and that's kind of, you know, more the human connection side. You know, obviously, we know the professional side, but just the, you know, the, the personal side of things. I know a lot of times we talk about sense of belonging for our students, but it's also important for our employees, and I think we value that as well. And I know when I transitioned to this role as chancellor, obviously, it's a big job, but it was, you know, my first time away from my own family. And so I know I went through, you know, I had some homesickness, and you're always there in true blue to support me in that regard as well. And then I've been honored and privileged to be there through your, the birth of your two grandbabies, who I know you're eager to spend more time with them. So I just want to thank you for, you know, your support and professionalism of me and the whole entire district, but also for just the personal bond and, and connection that we're able to make. And I think that's going to be a lasting thing. And I just wish you well as you transition into your next phase. And I know you're just going to love the heck out of your grandbabies and your family. So congratulations, Grace, and thank you so much. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Dr. Stern?
Thank you very much, President Inman. Want to congratulate the new board officers. Welcome trustee Inman, welcome trustee Bartlett. And also just tell a very quick story that's appropriate for the season. Many months ago, when the state came out with a budget, one of the things that they did to balance the budget was they pulled back something called LEP funds, which was supposed to fund work-based employment opportunities for our students with community partners, with industry partners. We had spent about a year preparing for that, developing contracts and forms and getting a process when the state pulled the money back. And it was several hundred thousand dollars that we lost. Israel Dominguez from Saddleback College was present at a meeting with the Samweli Foundation and talked about this. And to make a long story short, after developing a tighter relationship with Samweli, Samweli recently announced that they will be giving Saddleback College $3 million to develop work-based learning opportunities over the next three years for approximately 900 students. So I want to thank the workforce team and the folks who made that happen and the Samweli Foundation. And we, we received notice of the gift several weeks ago, but the blackout has just been listed, lifted. So we'll see, you'll hear more about that in my January board report and things to come. Also want to thank Scott Green for his service, Grace Garcia for her service, and two other people that I want to call out. So one, Ryan Brook, thank you for onboarding me for the last six years each day. Thank you for helping transform our cabinet, our college, and me. And without you at my side, to the extent we have had successes, I am not at all confident that those successes would have come about. And I don't think the rest of the college or the district will ever fully appreciate what you do. But I'm hoping that at the district, they will. They will come to realize what I have come to realize.
Give us a chance.
We will, we will. And then finally, to Corey Wathan, who is resigning as our, retiring as our Vice President of Administrative Services. Many things to thank Corey for, but more than anything else, for bringing process and objectivity and a student lens to our resource process that will be with us forever and will keep it sustainable. So thank you, Corey, for your years of service as well. Thank you, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Dr. Hernandez?
Thank you, President Inman. I also want to extend congratulations to each of the board members that were sworn in this evening, and a special welcome to trustee Bartlett. I look forward to hosting you at Irvine Valley College and to showcasing the, one of the two amazing colleges in this district. I also want to congratulate IVC Counselor Ruby Pastrana, who was named by the Orange County Department of Ed as a Community College Counselor of the Year. Ruby is just very passionate about what she does. She's also the Buente Counselor Coordinator. Many of you have met her. She will be honored in February at the Orange County Counselor Symposium. And then I want to extend a personal invitation to each of you, if you're available, for the president's spring opening session on January 7th at 2:00 p.m. This year, we have a guest speaker. As you know, every spring, I typically host a guest speaker. Kimberly Lowry, Dr. Lowry, is currently the Director of Leadership and Impact at, sorry, was previously the Director of Leadership and Impact at the Aspen Institute. And she currently serves as Director of the Texas Success Center and Vice President of the Texas Association of Community Colleges. More importantly, Kimberly's going to walk us through a very important conversation about the importance of social and economic mobility and empowering our community college students. She'll provide insights on aligning this work with equity, with processes, and equally important post-graduation outcomes. So I invite you all. And again, congratulations, Felicidades, Grace, and to Scott Green. He has just been just such a bold leader, and I so appreciate our monthly meetings and just the open candor in organic conversations that we have. And I also want to extend happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Chancellor for Business Services?
No report.
That was dramatic.
That took a long time. Vice Chancellor for Educational and Technology Services?
No report.
Vice Chancellor for Human Resources?
Sorry, I do have a report. Welcome trustee Bartlett. I have to thank Scott Ferguson-Green. No one works closer with union leadership than human resources. For the seven years that Kim Wittes, Executive Director, and myself have worked with him, he has not only been a terrific leader for the classified service, he's been a complete advocate for our classified professionals. We don't always agree, but when we don't agree, we reach across the table to try to find common ground. I will say, in my 23-year career in community colleges, he is probably one of the very best classified union leaders I have ever worked with. So I know you're listening, Scott Ferguson-Green, back behind the wall. Thank you for your service. We are, we appreciate your dedication to the classified service and the service that you gave the district, so thank you. And I want to say goodbye to Grace and congratulations on your retirement. You will be missed. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the open session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I was just handed that. So. Yeah, okay. So we are now adjourned, and the board will reconvene into closed session.
We don't need a motion for that, but I think it's, we customarily announce that when we do go back into closed session, we do not expect to have a report out after our closed session.
Okay. Bye.